This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the October 19th, 2020 council meeting to order at 7:00 P. M. Are there any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda? No. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
This is Counselor Webb. You also move?
Is there a second?
Counselor Webb, a second.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor McNair.
Hi.
Mayor Hobart.
Hi.
Counselor Allen.
Hi.
Counselor Wagner.
Hi.
Counselor Webb.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Please, Stephanie. Are there any presentations tonight? None. Okay. With that being said, I'd like to move right into my mayor's report, and it's fairly short. I just want to talk about voting and this is the time of year for elections and and the ballots came out a few days ago and I, both my wife and I sat down and voted and I, and it was a really good feeling to be able to vote and mail our ballots back in and and we've come quite a ways since the 13 counties when only white men could vote. Although it's not a right in our voting rights are not in our constitution, they're very important as well and I encourage everyone to vote. And I also would like to take this time to recognize our two incumbents, incumbents Susan Wagner and Bruce McNair, and that's a big commitment to re-up for another four years and I want to wish them the best in this coming election and I, again, I encourage everyone to get out and vote. So that's my mayor's report for this week. Are there any council committee meeting reports? I attended the library meetings last week and it's in our minutes tonight to be approved. Pretty much what was said at the meeting is in the minutes, so I didn't really have anything to bring back to the council from that meeting, so. Anyway. Are there any topics for form tonight? None. Well, we'll move right into the consent agenda for acceptance and the library meeting minutes for September 2020. Anyone like to make a motion to accept the library meeting minutes? Or just any discussion on those?
I will move for, to accept the consent agenda for acceptance.
Is there a second?
Counselor Webb, a second.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Wagner.
Hi.
Mayor Hobart.
Hi.
Counselor Webb.
Hi.
Counselor McNair.
Hi.
Counselor Allen.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Consent agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for September 28th, 2020. City council meeting minutes for October 5th, 2020. Any discussion, questions?
Mayor Hobart, I have one comment.
Okay, Counselor Allen.
On page four, second paragraph midway through it. Says Counselor Allen expressed frustration that he often feels as though counselors are trying to stifle him. I don't remember making that statement. Whenever we use the word stifle, and I never expressed my feelings as myself, I believe I was talking about council as a whole.
I would be happy to go back and review that section of the recording.
Thank you.
To come up with something different for that. I do recall that section and you didn't say stifle. I used that word to summarize what you said, but I am happy to go back and look at it.
I'd appreciate that, Stephanie.
Okay, anything else on the two meeting minutes? Anyone like to make a motion to accept these two meeting minutes?
It would only be to approve. Sorry, let me make sure I'm saying the right one. October 5th.
Okay. Anyone care to make a motion to accept the October 5th, 2020 meeting minutes?
This is Counselor Wagner. Still move?
Is there a second?
All second there.
Thank you, JR. Do you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Webb.
Hi.
Mayor Hobart.
Hi.
Counselor Allen.
Hi.
Counselor Wagner.
Hi.
Counselor McNair.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
I'd like to be recognized for a moment. Steph, wasn't that meeting on the 17th a workshop?
In the 28th.
Uh, let me, yeah, the 28th, sorry. You're right.
Yes, you are correct. It should, it should say work session, not regular meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's all I was wanting to bring up.
Yeah, I'll fix that when I bring them forward at the next meeting.
Okay, that's what I figured you were going to do.
Thank you.
Is there any unfinished business tonight? Okay. New business, letter from Greenfield Grandstand Committee. Extension requests can be found on page nine. And before we have discussion on this, I'd like to remind the council that Counselor Allen and my, both my, Counselor Allen and myself are on the Grandstand Committee. Just to remind the council that we are on the committee. And so with that being said, I'd like to turn it over to our guest Stacy Pelster from the Intercollegiate Society, and she'll talk about the, the letter, so.
All right, thank you for having me here. Can you all hear me okay? Okay. I appreciate you guys hearing me for, on behalf of the Grandstands Committee Group tonight. COVID pushed us back quite a bit actually on getting our actual start date for the repairs and when we did start to take, I believe in, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick and JR, but when you started to take apart the base portion that was covering up the base of the pillar, extensive rot was found, and so we brought it back before our engineer to get a new restructured design done. Because the portion that we were originally going to fix on that beam with welding a metal plate to it was now way too extensive to really do that. So they came back with a new engineering report, submitted it, and I believe it's been approved also by the code, Northwest Code. And so because of that, however, it's actually pushed us back quite a bit farther than we'd hoped when we were going to do originally have our repair completed by October, November here. Taking it back through design and now having to go and purchase new materials to meet the needs of the new repair pieces. It's going to be simpler, but it's also more complex because we had to go back through the repair process and then there were additional costs associated with the new engineering design plan. So with that said, because of all the setbacks that we had first off with six months of COVID pushing us back and now having to go through this, through that discovery, we're requesting a year extension of both the agreement and also the say if I'm wrong here again, and in the lease, say it again?
The lease and the MOA.
That's it, thank you. The lease and the MOA, thank you. That's pretty much it.
So Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So explain to me Mrs. Pelster, how COVID-19 affected you? Was it because you couldn't meet or?
There were two factors. Yeah, there were actually two, two factors. One, we couldn't meet, so basically meetings were on hold for almost four, four months of that before we finally were able to get together as a group. But beyond that, we weren't able to pull together crews to get onto the property, et cetera, before that.
And that was, that was because of COVID-19?
Majority, yes.
What, they just didn't want to be down there with, in pro, close proximity?
Well, just being in construction, getting crews to do anything during the, especially the initial parts of it was pretty difficult. And we weren't ready at the very beginning of COVID anyways to tackle it. It was when we actually had the project ready to go forward, we couldn't get the crews together to go forward.
Because they were too busy?
No, I actually don't know the factors for the reasoning behind it, but the main part of it was because of COVID and what was happening within the construction industry, it did put a delay on what we wanted to do.
Josette?
So I have a question. You have two agreements with the city. Both have a five-year initial term. Which were only one year into the May.
It wasn't the, it wasn't the agreement that needed the extension. It was, we had a clause in there that stated that within 18 months, we had to be completed by November of this year here. I believe it was either October or November of this year. And it was that clause in the agreement that we needed the extension of since we were, we've been pushed back on everything.
So I'm trying to find that Stacy, because I'm not I almost think we all pulled that out.
When we, when we got it, we had Stephanie send us a copy of it. It was still in there.
Well, I'm looking at the signed version right now.
Okay.
And what I think we left in there was that you had 24 months from the date of the fix to hold an event.
Well, yes.
The only thing that references months in there.
So did we take out and completely scratch that part? Because in the copies that we were looking at, we didn't see that scratched. But if it is, then there's no need for the extension because we still are okay. Which paragraph are you referencing to, so I can look at that too?
I'm looking at Exhibit C, the original that we signed. And then the lease and they, it says basically an initial term for the, for the agreement.
Which, which, which clause are you looking at? 1.1, 1.2? Where are you looking?
Well, the only way, place I see is the initial terms and renewals has the five years. That's two, 2.1, 2.2.
Yeah, that's not where it was. There was a
And it just has allowed uses is .3, property and liability insurance is .4, .5 is utilities, .6 is maintenance, .7 is scheduling, 8 is ownership, 9 is destruction and damage. But that was the 60 days after a big horrible event.
Yeah.
Let me look in the lease. But I didn't, when going through these today, I didn't see in the lease, .1 is lease term, and that's five years. Property as is, the rental, there's no amount of rental. Permitted use. Event use area. Compliance, non-disturbance, hydro substance, improvement. I mean, the condemnation section has
Yeah, the lack of use was a part of it. However, there was the part of the timeline for holding an event. It, that has to do with in 24 months of renovations being complete and a certificate of occupancy. However, I we're, I'm trying to recall because it was in the original when we were working through it about the, having it finished within 18 months. Don't you recall that? We actually had a deadline date on us, so.
I do remember that, but then I remember us going back and forth and I remember Counselor Wagner saying, well, if we take that out, then what's to say that they just don't sit on it for the five years?
That's right. I remember that too. So, okay, can you, I mean, so if, if you can confirm that it is not a part of the lease, then obviously we aren't going to need an extension. I need to confirm that. Can you send me another copy? Because the copy that we were sent by Stephanie was a copy and not a signed version. And so I'm not sure if I just didn't get the final myself. I know that Dean had a copy of it. I did not get that from him. So can we double?
I'll double check, I'll triple check it, but I believe that the two signed copies don't include that.
Okay, because that's what we just need to double check then.
Yeah. So you'll still be well within
Oh, yeah, five years. That's not a problem. Yeah, that was never the issue. The issue was within the 18 months, if it wasn't completed or worked on, you know, then we would have a major issue. And so we wanted an extension of that portion of the lease if that was coming to head. And we'd been asked a couple times by Counselor McNair with regards to when is the completion going to happen? And so we were under the impression that the deadline is still falling upon us imminent, you know? And if it's not, that's okay. I can deal with it. It's not. And we can go forward from that, but I'd like to confirm it at least.
Okay. I can review the meeting minutes also to see if it was in a motion.
I would appreciate that because I looked back on any meeting minutes, could not find anything with regards to the decisions made around that time. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
So I think as long as you're complete with the renovations by the May of 21. Is that right? Yeah.
That's next year.
Then that gives you the, well, then that gives you the two years to hold an event after that, within the five years total. Does that make sense?
Well, the event side of it, it just has to happen obviously within 24 months of, of occupancy. That, I'm not so much worried, however, if we have a deadline anywhere, I need to know what it is and we need to be able to react appropriately because if we're going, so the other question is, you know, during the winter, there is a certain time when we're not allowed to be able to do anything down there. And if we
That would be right now.
That's correct. And so knowing that we have these restrictions and then it goes till, what, April? If that, if I recall? I need to know that we have an assurance of plenty of time to finish this. Once the materials are purchased, the pieces are all together, you know? And it takes Oh, go ahead.
Your deadline to complete it and then have the 24 months to actually hold something before the five years is up? Because that would look, I think, not good on future councils if we didn't even get to the event in five years. Would be May of 22.
That's fine. I can deal with May of 22, considering we're at the point now to do it, but all right. As long, if, if you can double check those pieces for me, then, Rick, are you okay with that?
I'm totally okay with it and, you know, I'm just ready to start ordering timbers, so.
I know you are. I know you are. We're close on that and that's, that was, that's been the frustrating thing is going backwards the way we had to, so.
Go ahead, Susan.
Hi, this is Counselor Wagner. I'm I'd just like to clarify a couple things. So in our let's see, in May of 27, on May 27th, 2020, we received or council received a, an email from Linda, but from Rick Hobart, city, you know, from the city. A letter that said we've reached our fundraising goal, work permit, contractors meeting with us next week to finalize details and begin Phase Two repairs.
Yeah, that's right. We had gotten all the fundraising done then.
But that was in May. Um, and if you're saying that, you know, I'm just confused and I'd like a little more assurance of a couple of things, but I, I'm just confused why you're saying COVID shut everything down. You didn't meet for six months, but yet in June, you had a date certain to meet with the contractor.
I can actually explain that because we didn't actually, no, I clarified, we didn't meet for four months. Our last meeting was February. The next meeting we had was four months after that. Because it, we didn't meet. We didn't even do a virtual meeting during that time because we weren't actually sure what was happening. So we were basically just on pause. Rick and JR then coordinated during the time, once we came out of the real shutdown period phase of that, they coordinated to communicate and try to get back with the contractor that we'd been working with to come and reassess what we're doing. Because it'd been quite a while since he had stepped foot out in front of the grandstands. So we were just keeping bases, trying to keep moving forward on the project because at that point, that was when our fundraising efforts had made the minimum amount to make the repairs happen and to buy the materials and to pay that contractor for his, you know, his work. So he was going to reassess at that point. I don't know, Rick, I can't remember what happened after that, but I do know that was it then or was it a little later when you guys actually went and discovered the rot part?
Well, it was right around that time when we discovered the, the rot had gone about 12 feet up the post. And then we decided to change the application and go with a glue lamp instead of replacing the truss. And so we, which is, we had to have that re-engineered, of course. And we're putting additional side bracing on both the east and west ends with a one-inch bar, just to reinforce it because as it stands, it's you know, about the only thing holding that thing up is the scaffolding from Northwest Scaffles. So we decided to go with a different application because of the rot and then and then we got ahold of Miller Engineering soon after that, and they came out and did another assessment. And then we submitted another engineering plan to Northwest Code and it just came back approved and so we're, plus checking with timber suppliers. The COVID has really affected their, their industry also and the first place I called was Parlumber and they were like eight weeks out if they could even get the timber we required, so. But we did find a supplier that's willing to work with us and so that's where we're at right now, so.
Okay, I, I'm just I'm not trying to blabber a point. I just, I'm a little confused about the timeline based on the, the May email and February your last meeting. That's really only three months and it's not, I'm not trying to nitpick. I'm just trying to understand and make sure that I understand really what the timeline is on this. And I, just a moment. I think that I'm going to take my other comment offline with the mayor regarding procedural things related to the emails that are being sent. So I think that covered all my questions and I appreciate the hard work. I know there's a lot of it. I know COVID-19 and then the supplies are getting tighter and tighter. For us, it's not as much through the COVID-19 issues, but the fires. Wood is prime fodder right now. You know, a lot of it burned up and there's a lot that's needing to be replaced with all the fires, including locally, so. That's a, a big project and look forward to the next update.
Okay, thank you, Susan.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Um, I don't know that I necessarily agree with that. The timber supply is, they're logging everything that, that burned. Log prices have dropped.
But access has not. I mean, I've been working in my electrical industry and it's hitting our area like crazy and electrical, and it is the same when we're trying to even get housing materials for our own construction on our home. If you try to get anything that's bigger than a two-by-four, even the two-by-fours are hard to come by and you can't get them on a straight shipment right now, even from Home Depot or Parlumber. So I absolutely understand where he's coming from and how he was searching for the materials and trying to find a source that would give it to us in a more timely fashion and you just can't find it right now. It's just what it is. So the source that he found, not only was it a good price, they actually gave us a small percent discount due to being nonprofit, which is a benefit considering we just had a huge increase in our budget costs due to having to re-engineer everything. So that in conjunction with the scarcity of this size of material has made it difficult.
Well, timber like that, lamp, laminated is a little bit different than a solid timber. Use a lot of small timber to make it. I think if people are work, are at home working on stuff, that's why the market, there's a, supply is gone. There's only one reason why a lot of market goes down. It's all about supply and demand.
Okay, anything else?
So how, I do have one more question. How is the group themselves, are they maintaining membership?
Has it lost membership? Uh, not exactly sure what you mean. We actually did gain a member who has some experience with grant writing and such, and so that's also a nice, plus he's a younger fellow. So it's nice to see that support coming from the community.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
I just know that a few people have dropped out and I was just concerned that maybe you might be having problems on that end. Time goes on, people weary, get weary.
That's true. I know the group hasn't changed since That's true. I know the group hasn't changed since for a while.
Counselor Allen, Counselor Allen, you go ahead.
Yeah, like Rick uh, had mentioned, full disclosure, I am the president of the Subcommittee of the Grandstands under the Intercultural Society umbrella. Working on this grandstand project. And this spring, when the COVID shut down, it did affect us as far as nobody was doing anything. When I did contact Jim Morrison, uh. When we thought maybe we were starting to come out of it, his first response to me was, I'm sitting home, I'm not doing anything unless it's somebody I absolutely know, so. That went on for a while. Like Mayor Hobart said, we got him down there, I think it was June or maybe July and um, looked things over. He had a few concerns, then the city tore the deck off and the steps there next to that corner post and um. Really let us pull the facial board off there and get a good look at it and it was pretty evident that had brought it and slowly sank. The original engineering plans had not accounted for about eight inches of slow rock where that post had just deteriorated at the bottom. So when they designed it, it was with no jacking intended. It was basically designed. To put steel skirts on each side, bolted on. Then cut a foot or two of the post out, slip a new section in. And then put steel on the other sides and weld it up. Well, upon further inspection and visibility, it was obvious that uh, that design wasn't gonna be work, wasn't gonna work well. It wasn't gonna look good. I don't think it would have been structurally sound, so the hard decision was made at that time to uh. Get Miller Engineering and Ron back out there. And at that time, we discussed putting a whole new post in, which is a coastal uh, Douglas fir. Treated uh, non-heart cut, I believe, so it's not just run-of-the-mill stuff. And also a new, a new post going horizontal that ties it back to the, back to the structure. And then, of course, the glue lamp. To uh, make it a better than than new construction and that's what we're looking for, something that's not gonna be a patch. We want it to be better than it was. So it it costs $4,000 to do that engineering again. And um. It it has set us back a little bit. And uh, we're hoping Counsel understands and lets us move forward. Thanks.
Any other discussion?
I have another question to ask the president there of that, uh, count one. JR.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Are you gonna be able to finish this next year?
That's the plan. Um, hopefully we'll keep finding more problems. We're gonna get this one side all buttoned up. And uh, one thing I forgot to mention was, uh, they did add cross bracing on that end, which is, I believe it's one inch threaded rod. So it's gonna give the, give it a lot more stability. Probably part of the reason they did that is we're going from a five-foot truss to a two-foot glue lamp.
Right.
But I think it's a simpler fix, actually. Just demo out that old truss totally. And put new posts in, new cross braces and 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 new beam.
Is the chief on there? Is he on uh, back from vacation? Josette?
Yes.
Is he on the conference call there?
Yes.
Can you hear me, chief?
Yeah, I can hear you.
So. Have there, have you been having any issues as a department with people go getting past the barriers there? And.
Um, not necessarily the barriers, but they've been going in, they had a couple of times where they broke into the back door there that's been locked and somebody was sleeping in there for a while.
Uh, okay. So it's not a, it's not a big problem, man?
It's not an ongoing issue, um, but it does happen sporadically and I think the the more we patrol the area, the less likely we're gonna have issues, but. We lighten up on the patrols a little bit while we'll be back into it again.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. There's no other discussion. I think we're ready to move on. Thank you very much, Stacy, for your input tonight.
Have a great evening, guys.
Thank you. Okay. Waiver of remonstrance report from Shaw's. Page 10. Not a very long letter. There is a picture accompanying with it.
So you guys all got the the map that Stephanie sent? It clearly shows there's no sidewalks on Perry Street anywhere. So they meet the criteria. It's just for council to confirm. That we're making them meet the criteria. And until there's a discussion under planning to change this protocol, this is kind of how it'll come to you guys.
So that has to originate in planning, Josette?
Say that again, Bruce?
Excuse me. That has to originate in planning. We talked about this, I think, the last meeting or maybe it was a couple of meetings ago.
It was the last meeting, yeah. And planning is working on changes to Title IX. And so that's where it would come out of is proposed changes to Title IX.
Yeah, I I remember something about.
Act was going one way to kind of get the the burden off of council, but then in the discussion, Counselor Allen was interested in. Maybe batting that idea around a little bit more and not just making it a procedural thing such like water leak determination is.
Well, I remember that that was the, when the remark was about pulling the Band-Aid off and doing what was needed. Um, I think, I'm not, I'm not proposing that at this particular time, I'm just.
Right, and ultimately, section two of Title IX. Real, the part that's about sidewalks really gives council the authority to go into an area that does not meet the code and say. Guess what, neighborhood? You're putting in sidewalks. So that's always an availability. If there were areas that need it and you know, pretty much when we're trying to talk about stormwater and upgrading our stormwater plan. Missing curbs and gutters is a huge part of the problem with stormwater in our town. Because it really does not get directed or channeled the way it should. In a lot of areas. But that's not on the discussion tonight, so it's just a waiver for this one property.
Right. Any other discussion? Anyone like to entertain a motion to. Accept this. Waiver of exemption?
I'll make that motion, Mayor. That uh. We accept this. Waiver of remonstrance.
Do you change that to approve waiver of remonstrance request?
Yeah, inter end of a waiver of remonstrance.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you, JR. You call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Uh, Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor McNair?
Aye.
You said. Aye?
Yes, aye, yeah.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Business from the departments.
I do have a little bit this time.
Okay.
Couple of things I've been uh, talking to you guys a little bit about some uh, notable cases. That we had been working on for for a little while and one of those is kind of coming, coming to to an end. We're about ready to wrap it up, so I feel inclined to talk about it a little bit. Although I can't release too much information, I wanna at least advise you of it. A ways back, we got a report from the Oregon Department of Justice through the Internet Crimes Unit. One of our residents possibly was, had been in possession and disseminated child pornography. Um, we wrote a search warrant and assisted by the Oregon Department of Justice, they came out and helped us serve the warrant. Um, the warrant got done, oh, just toward the tail end of last month. Um, we collected some evidence. No arrests have been made yet. The evidence is being analyzed by the DOJ, um, their forensics unit. And once that's all wrapped up, we'll be able to release a little bit more information about that case. But we put a lot of hours into that one. I can answer probably some small questions about it, but I can't release any pertinent details yet. Um, another note, um, the Police Department, the Fire Department and Metro West will be hosting a trunk-or-treat event on Halloween. From five to seven at Spencer Park. Um, they're gonna be delivering candy to trick-or-treaters through PVC tubes to maintain social distancing. So hopefully that will have a good turnout and be something good for the community. Um, and the last thing I have is a couple of months back, I applied for a grant um, through the Bulletproof Vest Partnership. I got noticed today that that was approved, um, so we'll be able to receive some grant funds. For our body armor that I need to replace, uh, three, possibly four this year. Um, and they'll pay uh, up to 50% of those those costs, so. And that's all I had.
Thank you, Chief Connor. Any questions for the chief? I have one, um, and this is probably for Josette also. Did the cameras get installed at the uh, scout cabin yet?
Yes.
Oh, good.
We're still uh, gonna be learning how to use them here, I think, for a few days and we got a few more to install at City Hall. Um, that'll, that'll come later, but I think as far as I know, everything is up and running and they they look good.
Yeah, great. I happened to drive um, out of town early. One morning, probably not as early as JR does, but. I go by the uh, Health Center and Senior Center and boy, they, that parking lot at the Senior Center is really lit up nicely. I. I was really impressed. That's uh, that's some uh, really good bright lights down there and thank you, Josette, for that. Have you had any more? Uh, I've got one more question for you, chief. Quite a bit of activity down at the gazebo behind the scout cabin and especially when the sun goes down and. Has that um, still continued to be a problem down there?
A small one. It has slowed some and I think now that the cameras are up down there, that'll be a, a bit more of a deterrent. I think we've got some, some new signs ordered. We've kind of had an enforcement issue because we don't have the hours posted. Um, and I think those signs should be going up pretty soon.
Oh, good.
Hey, chief.
Thank you for.
Good, Bruce.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Bruce.
Have you uh, are you got any plans to install some cameras down in the sewer plant?
I think they did the sewer plant as well already.
Good.
They did.
Good, that's good to hear.
Thank you for the work you continue to do, chief, for us.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other departments to hear from tonight? If not, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 925 granting a franchise to Eastern Oregon Telecom. LLC.
Yeah, so I sent you guys an updated version of the ordinance and I was gonna go through um. The tweaks that Legal did, so you should see it in your inbox. Um, he sent it to me today. So I can go through and just tell you what the tweaks are. So Eastern Oregon Telecom. Is really functioning under the name Blue Mountain Network, so that's the first change is granting uh. This ordinance granting is to Blue Mountain Networks LLC. Um, it's a Delaware limited liability corporation. It's not an organ. That's another uh, fix. So in the title and then the first whereas, those are the changes. Um, in the franchise agreement, it also changes the name and the um, place of the liability company. And then again, in definitions, it changes it to Blue Mountain Networks and a Delaware liability company. And then the next change isn't until. Section four. Part B. So um. In the original one that came in the packet, it said it would have an expiration. At the expiration of the initial five years, this franchise shall automatically renew. That still stands. The section that got tweaked. Um, is. Which time the parties may renew the franchise. They just put an automatic renewal. Unless the city provides notice to the franchisee that the city does not wish to renew. And so we wanted the city to have the option of saying, we don't want to renew. Um, but other, if we don't say that, then it will automatically renew. So then. Go down here. So then in section nine. Also B, 9B. They changed to allow the franchisee to transfer if their primary business is telecommunications systems operation. And provided that the, whoever they're transferring to has a majority beneficial ownership in the franchisee company. So it just left them the option of someone had, is a majority holding partner and they want to transfer this franchise to that that person, that'd be okay. But it would have to be a person that holds the beneficial ownership of the franchisee. Um, and that that such transfer, such as that would not be in reasonably held, withheld by the city. So we wouldn't stop them from doing that if they can prove that person's. The beneficial owner and they're transferring, that we would allow that transfer. So then section 11 on your guys' one. So then Section 11 on your guys' one, you saw that the percentage was yellow. So we did a little research, and they had requested, they'd come to us with asking for 5%. But what we did in our research is that the city has to remain competition neutral. So we have to give the same percentage or require the same percentage from this internet franchise corporation, the same as we are from our other internet franchises in the city. And so they had requested 5%, but we're currently in our agreement with LSN at 7%. So we left this blank to have that discussion with councils, and we told them, "We're going to ask you for 7%." And they were okay with that. They didn't have a problem that we were saying competition neutral. The competitive neutrality is what it's called. So that percentage would be 7% to make all the internet companies' percentage for the compensation match. And then on Section 12, we added in, in the right to inspect records, is that we may inspect maps and data during business hours. It used to say at any time, but we're saying during business hours, as long as we give them three days' notice.
Two, three.
And then under Section 13, there is the request for granted all the rights under Section 12 as long as we give them 30 days' notice. So there's some other things in Section 12 that we give them 30 days' notice to have performed an audit. If we're going to perform an audit, we have to give them more than three days' notice. We have to give them 30 days, which seems legit as well in their request. And then a little further down, it says the cost of such audit and review shall be borne by the city, meaning if we want to inspect this stuff, we're going to pay. Except that if it is established that the franchisee has made an underpayment greater than $1,000. So for some, if we go to inspect, how many customers do you have, how much money should we be, and we have to do an audit, and we find they shorted us more than $1,000, then they're paying for the audit. Double check. And then the last change is in the franchisee box on Page 11, just changing the name to Blue Mountain Network and a different address than we had previously had. And then the last one is on Page 13 to change Eastern Oregon Telecom to Blue Mountain Network. Are there any other questions in what you saw that weren't changes of the franchise? Any concerns or things you... This is the group that the county commissioners have been working to try and provide rural internet to the community. This company purchased what remained of Mike Seeger's equipment to run it similar to how he had run the cable on the different poles throughout town. They have a lot to come back and put back because Mike had removed a lot of it. But the little building he built up on the, by the cell towers where his stuff was housed, that's what they purchased from him, is the equipment that remained. So they're coming to us requesting a franchise.
Susan, you got to bring your hand up for a question.
I did. Sorry, I thought I was muted before when I made a comment. So that answered one of my questions. So this is in addition to our current providers. So my question, though, just to confirm, there are no exclusivity clauses hidden anywhere in this document subtly or not so subtly. I just want to make sure that this doesn't prevent anybody else or... And I know that there is a termination, the right to terminate, but it it seems really... It concerns me that it doesn't give the city enough flexibility if they want to get out of it for any reason. I mean, it's really tight. It's like, okay, we have you for five years, and then we re-up you for five years, every five years. And unless there's these very, very specific things that occur, we can't get out of our agreement with you, not to say we ever would want to. I just, it seems very, very restrictive on the city, and I just want to make sure that everyone's okay with that. And you're okay with that.
Well, typically, these type of businesses won't go in if there's a really easy termination because they're risking putting up all the infrastructure and then having the city be like, "Meh, 30 days, we don't like you anymore." There is no exclusivity where other internet providers couldn't come in and we couldn't give other internet providers a franchise. So Rubens actually had a lot of experience with this company in, on his side of the state, kind of hermit's scenario. So he's well-versed in developing this franchise and has written for other communities the franchises for them. I don't know. I think if it was much lighter, they probably, it'd probably be a hard sell. I mean, they're going to have to basically provide the same or better service at a cheaper price than Zipley or for a few people that have it, LSN like Warwick and stuff. So that's going to be their hurdle to cross separate from having a franchise with us.
You're muted, Susan. There you are. Okay, any other questions or discussions, or does the council want to?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Did the title change?
Just the name, the name changed.
I didn't get a new copy, so what is the name?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll get one later.
I sent a call of them and not you, so. So the title is an ordinance of the City of Renonia granting to Blue Mountain Networks LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, and the rest is all the same.
Josette, I checked my email at 5:00, and I still haven't received the updated version yet, so.
No, it should be, it should, it got probably sent to you after that, Rick, because it got sent to you once I realized he sent it to me after I got in here for the meeting. Sorry.
Okay.
I just went through his redlined version and read you the different tweaks.
Okay. Go ahead, Stephanie. I'll get to you, Dale, next.
Just as a heads up to everybody, we will not be able to fully approve this tonight. If you guys want, you can make a motion to approve it as read by title only the first time. But because there was quite a few changes, we need to notice it again. And then I would bring it forward to the meeting on the second.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Stephanie. Can we, one follow-up question on that comment. Can we go ahead and get a general consensus for the franchise fee then tonight? Next, at the next approval for the next meeting?
Well, if you guys made a motion to approve it for the first time, you'd be doing it with that change, unless you guys wanted it to come back before you did a first approval. So you would be approving it with that 7%.
Okay.
Unless you didn't want it to be 7%.
Well, the way Josette presented it to us, it was, you know, our decision to either go with the 5% or the 7%, so. Okay. All right, Dale.
Yeah, I guess that was my question. What was the percentage going to be?
Well, on behalf of our legal, they would have us make it 7% so that we stay within the competitive neutrality. And we're charging all internet providers the same amount, not giving one person a leg up over someone else by charging them less for franchise.
Okay, I guess I didn't catch that first time around.
Mayor Hobart.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, Josette, you'll have to forgive me. This isn't really my wheelhouse. But when you say all internet providers, when they join, how many internet providers will we have in this town? That's my first question.
Well, so we have currently, we had Frontier and LSN, Light Speed Networks. But Light Speed Network's only current customer, or customers, I believe, are West Oregon Electric and the Health Center. And then now that it's Zipley, that's another franchise agreement that will be coming forward to you, and we'll be asking them to do 7% also, so that all the internet providers are the same. So if you approve this one and you approve Zipley's, we will have three.
Okay.
That are bringing that service. Yeah.
My next question would be, how does this benefit the citizens, in your opinion?
Well, it gives them, you know, it doesn't allow Zipley to have the only monopoly that'll serve residences. Right? So right now, people either have HughesNet, which is satellite, which doesn't have a franchise agreement because it's up in the sky, or Zipley, which people are having a lot of trouble with, especially with homeschooling, that whole system kind of being tapped out for everyone using it all the time. So it would just bring in another player and give another option to residents. My feeling is, from what they've done on the east side of the state, is that they're going to come in pretty cost-effective versus Zipley. They're going to come in at a pretty close, if not lower, cost for service from what they've done.
Are they committing to a dollar amount on upgrades, or are they just going to take over what's here?
What do you mean on upgrades? They're bringing in brand-new service through through the same kind of network that the cable company, doing it up on the poles like the cable company did.
Okay.
They'll have a few underneath, but they'll have to get permits for that and...
Okay, and just so I understand, I think I do, the 7% would be, the city gets 7% of each fee that's charged to each customer? Is that gross or minus expenses and then the fees, the 7%?
Let me go down, try and make sure I say it right. So it is 7% of the franchisee's gross revenues. It does not include taxation of revenues from internet access services, so that's a different law. But gross revenue, 7%.
Okay, so if it was 30 a month, roughly, the city would get $2 of that?
Sure, without doing the math, yes.
Well, I'm just ballparking here, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Susan.
Hi, so Josette, you said that they are running new lines? They're not just piggybacking onto the existing infrastructure that's already there for internet?
No, because they are running it similar to how Mike ran his cable, which is on the poles, a whole separate infrastructure.
Okay.
They're not hooking into the telephone like Zipley.
Oh, I had one more question. If I may.
Go ahead, JR.
Josette, you mentioned that they bought existing structure from Mr. Seeger. Are you talking about on Mr. Seeger's private property? Or are you talking about also on a city property that hasn't been used in 20 years?
They bought, well, he removed a lot of the cable, right, when he went out? But there was remaining equipment, whether that, I don't know, bracket, I don't know what's up there. That's, they bought the remaining equipment from him.
It seems odd that you had abandoned something in the city and then have the rights to sell it decades later, don't you think?
Well, but it was always his equipment, because he was solely responsible for taking it down, putting it up, adding new, taking out old ones. It was really just the franchise that the city gets, not the equipment itself, if that makes sense what you're saying.
No, I understand. I just was thinking about setting up precedence. If another company come in and then left for 20 years and then sold it down the road, I don't seem to know how that works.
Yeah, I don't think they had very much to purchase, because from what I understand, a lot of the lines and different things had been removed over time. They must have saw something there was worth their while. I don't know what that exactly is. I didn't get into the deeds with them on that.
Well, thank you for trying to answer that for me.
Sure.
So I have a follow-up question, which you may not know. Because you're talking about how Zipley is having trouble keeping up with people's capacity as it is. I know that this new Blue Mountain Networks is going to run new cable or whatever from the, you know, to each of the homes. But what about the feed into town? Are they just piggybacking onto what Zipley already has or what's already, the infrastructure that's already there? Where are they going to get their initial internet linkage from?
That I do not know. I do not believe that Zipley would let them piggyback. That system Zipley has coming into town is not even sufficient for telephones and internet and DISH and all that. I can find that out for you guys, especially since we're potentially bringing this back.
I think it's something I'd like to know.
Okay.
But I don't speak on behalf of the whole council.
I would also like to know that. That's my opinion.
Okay, any other discussion about Blue Mountain Telecom? If not, we'll move on to Resolution 2020-13, approving a license and maintenance agreement with Colby County for... Yes.
You guys are just wanting it to come back with the answers, with the 7% fully cooked for full adoption at your next meeting?
Yes. I believe that's, you can ask the council again. Yep.
I'm okay with that.
Counselor McNair.
So I just begs the question. If Zipley's coming back to you, is that just a renewal of their franchise?
We did not. When Frontier sold to Zipley, theirs did not have a transference clause. So Frontier's sunsetted, and Zipley's needs to be its own new one.
Okay, so the franchise fee to Frontier is moot now. It's dead, right?
Right.
So we actually don't have a franchise fee with Zipley or Blue Mountain?
Right, we just have one with LSN. Right, we just have one with LSN.
Okay. I, I, I forgot about them guys. So, where I was trying to go was if we don't have one, then seven percent is, uh, we, we do have one for seven percent with LSN.
Yes.
Even though they only service two people, huh? All right.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm ready to move forward, Your Honor, I mean, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. You have a general consensus to move forward with this for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Josette. Next will be Resolution 2020-13, approving a license and maintenance agreement with Columbia County for a ballot box on city property. Can be found on pages twenty-three through twenty-six.
So the county sent me this after they installed the box. So. I'm sure we could still tweak something, but. If there's no questions, then you would just approve this and authorize me to sign it.
Dale, go ahead.
The agreement.
Well, I used it today, so, but it was, it's a little bit of an awkward getting to it. I mean, I, I had to really stretch to get out of my car, try to get close enough to the box, not hit that curb in there. And Steve Whiteman was right ahead of me, and he didn't even attempt it, he said, didn't think he could do it, but it'll serve its functions, so, but, I don't know. Could have maybe, placement might have been a little different, but that's my only complaint.
Mayor Holbar?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Well, my question, probably Josette can answer this, um, who's gonna move the ballots to Columbia County? Does that change now that the box is set by Columbia County?
No, so the ballots were always taken by a representative of them or a witness that acted as a representative of them. They're not giving us the schedule of when they're gonna be picking it up, but they'll be emptying it periodically up until they get the last load at eight PM on election night. But it always was, one of their representatives transported on a Colco bus, Columbia County Transportation, always took the last bin at eight o'clock, but now they'll just do it on their own with, it may still be a Columbia County transfer on the bus, may not, I don't know, but it's someone under Dawn at the Elections Department.
Okay, I guess I always assumed our librarian had something to do with it, but I was probably ignorant on that one.
I think Nancy did in the past, travel with them, with the representative, or may have been the representative they appointed, um, that rode on the Colco bus.
I see. I have no issues with this agreement.
Any other discussion or questions? Anyone like to entertain a motion to adopt this resolution? Counselor Webb?
Okay.
Uh, I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 2020-13, Resolution of the City of Vernonia approving a license and maintenance agreement between Columbia County and the City of Vernonia for a ballot box on city property.
Sir, a second.
Counselor McNair.
Counselor McNair, second, then. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Holbar.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Counselor Allen.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Counselor McNair.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Corse- thank you, Stephanie. Bill Correspondence tonight, moving right into our City Administrator Report.
Yeah, I apologize for not having a printed version to you guys. We finally got the prescription for the walnut tree, um, some detailed wording out of the American National Standardized Instruction on Tree Trimming, like ANZI or something is the acronym. Um, so I'm gonna be getting those bids out. Um, I did get a call from Maple Crest and talked to them about waiting for that description, so I could ask for bids apples to apples for all the different arborists. Um, we did have Goby Walnut come pick up our limbs that were down. Um, and those are getting scaled and then we'll get a, sign a invoice with them and then they'll send us a check for what that was worth. There was, the top of one of the branches or one of the chunks had a good crack down the middle of it, so I foresee us not getting exactly what I measured with the end and the length for the Scribner scale, so. We'll see what we get on that. So, um, staff's working on quite a few things. Um, we're finishing up the Nickerson, um, public part of the stormwater project. Um, we just fixed a stormwater issue up on Humantilla and First, um, on this side of town, um, that had been kind of lagging. We're waiting on Catch Basin, so that's what we're really waiting on to finish the Nickerson. For some reason, those have just been back orders for forever. Staff's also working on the Clasip Sewer Project, which is, as I've mentioned a few times, the sewer line cuts um, private property on Fifth Avenue. And so we're gonna be taking the sewer down the unimproved Clasip from Sixth to Fourth. We found out in researching with legal that trees that are in unimproved right-of-ways belong to the adjacent adjoining property owner. So I sent letters to the three property owners that have bought that right-of-way and kind of basically asked them to respond to me by the twenty-sixth with their preference, either the city cuts the trees and hauls them off, the city cuts the trees and places them on their property, or they all go in together and send out loads of logs. Those are their options. Um, it sounds like from talking to one of the owners today that once the city marks the trees that need to be removed, they're going to probably move the route of having someone, a small firm, just log it and split the proceeds between them. So, that would be the best case scenario for us, because then someone else logs it and we put our sewer project in and kind of don't have all the trouble, but we'll wait and see what happens with that. So I know I've mentioned also the Corey Hill, kind of manhole testing, smoke testing, the Clasip, at the bottom of Clasip, we have that kind of Bellagio fountain when we have heavy downpours, when the ground's saturated. And then I've also mentioned to you guys the Springboard, um, kind of undersized pipe that gets the Springboard neighborhood um, to Bridge Street. So originally, we had talked about doing a CDBG design grant, but in kind of estimating with Lower Columbia Engineering, the, there's kind of a, maybe a chance that the design would not be that expensive, which would help us out, because if the design doesn't cost very much and we can use SDCs to have him develop that design, we could go for a CDBG grant as early as the February request date, um, which would let us get moving a lot quicker than if we wait and go for the design in February and then wait until July to do the request for construction. There's a lot of interested parties in the, um, platted lots that are up there on Springboard. Um, if any of you knew, Jim Brensmann owned a whole bunch of that and has portioned it off and him and his ex-wife are selling those to people and they're wanting to do duplexes and multiple homes. And there's just really not the sewer to support any more homes connecting to that. So the idea of waiting all the way till July to apply for a construction grant really puts all of those homes or the potential homes coming on the tax rolls like on the back burner, which is kind of troublesome for us. So we're looking at having, um, basically a design estimate to getting Lower Columbia Engineering the data with what we see this project entailing, um, which would include smoke testing, manhole lining, a small pump station in Springboard for the sewer, and then a pump station potentially near the old substation on Adams that the electric company has, that would do a force main and take all of the Corey Hill and this side of the Gray Bridge straight to the headwork. So that Pump Station One down by the dump would only have to deal with the flatland sewer, the, you know, mini mart to the bottom of the hill. Um, and then it would kind of solve a lot of our issues. So, we're looking at that and, and hopefully gonna get a design estimate. We have one for the Springboard section, but it didn't include that force main pump station, but those are kind of known quantities of what those cost as a unit to put in. Um, it's really just more of the grade and the topography expense that we don't have a, a, a good idea about. So we're working on that. We're al- also working on the multiple tree projects. So this is the winter of trees. So, um, I know the prices aren't good, but getting the, getting all of the paperwork and everything ready to pull the trigger on Aura when it, the market comes back, um, dealing with the Cottonwoods and Hawkins. Um, Spencer has a few trees that we had identified in the, um, tree walk-around with Tim and I, and then Tim and I are meeting again tomorrow morning at the Linear Trail to deal with and mark the ones he's comfortable falling that we kind of inadvertently killed with that project. And then, once that's done, we'll have West Oregon come and either just top the ones that we're worried about hitting their lines and then he could fall the, the buds of them, or maybe West Oregon would take the ones that are potentially gonna hit their lines out completely. And then we do still have this winter, once the Haylam River Campground closes, um, bidding out and having someone chunk down that dangerous kind of nursery maple that's just hollowing underneath and crazy on top. Um, so that's kind of what staff has going on with, um, the projects that we have right in front of us. We also have, um, a number of, um, just little projects, so we have a whole bunch of people interested in putting more trees in Spencer Park, so we're kind of working on that as a side deal. Hopefully, I can get Parks Committee to meet, even if it's a Zoom meeting with Steve Whiteman, who was on Parks, who said he has seven more people interested in putting trees in the park, so getting a plan through them. And then, just, you know, the regular old day-to-day stuff. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I do, Mayor.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Okay, I thought maybe I hung myself up there. Um, so, refresh my memory, how, how are we gonna pay for that upgrade on the sewer down there coming off Springboard?
Well, so the design, we're hoping, comes out of SDC, the whole project construction cost, because it deals with um, human health hazards with the INI and stuff, would be a CDBG grant that we would go for, for construction of the entire thing.
Oh, okay.
That's what could be applied for in February.
The, the sewer SDCs, do they, I'm not asking you're gonna do that, but do they, are they usable under that? Is, is that considered a, um, enlargement of the infrastructure?
Yeah, so that would be increasing capacity, the, the current line can't take what we need to put on it.
So, what, have we done any kind of, uh, in-house study on what communities, uh, in our surrounding area are charging on their SDCs as compared to Vernonia? I know we're low, way low.
We have not done that, and that would be more of a Mark study where you find your similar-sized communities and do just a spreadsheet-type review of that. And then council could, um, choo- choose to increase those. There's a process, but you could choose to increase those.
Well, with all the new building, that's part of what that SDCs are for, is that, uh, people that are coming in to a new, to the area, um, pay their fair share, instead of putting the burden on the existing folks.
Right.
We've talked about it a lot over the years, because we've never done anything about it.
Dale, go ahead.
Um, I noticed it looked like maybe some work is happening down there, the gravel parking lot at the lake, uh, going maybe, uh, up in behind the, uh, the old mill houses, or are they, are they thinking about starting that sewer project in there? Like in behind Ovi's house?
So that is on the schedule to happen this year in the budget. Um, to, to put in the new line and then, once that happens, and the current owners have so many months to disconnect and reconnect to the new line before we decommission the old line. Because you can't just drop it on them, you have to give them amount of time to get a new lateral.
So you're not actually aware it's happening now?
I'm, well, a lot of that, go ahead.
I see a small track over there, and they scraped all the blackberries off and kind of a little path up from the parking lot up to the backside there, I was, I'm just making an assumption.
Yeah, I don't know that, I don't know, I'd have to talk to Jeff about what that is, Dale. I just know that, that project as a whole is in the budget.
Yeah, and I, I'd hope that does go off this year, because I think it's been in the last three years' budgets, so.
Yeah.
Get a little tired of seeing it, so.
Well, I know that it could also be the owner there, the new home there on the triangle, because he, in the last downpour, did have some, um, stormwater problems off the alley, washing away his retaining wall, so that's why I don't know if it's him or us.
Yeah, it's, it's.
He could be ditching it to go off his property a different way, too.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a ways off of him towards the east, so, something different.
Yeah, I'll have to ask Jeff.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for the City Administrator?
I have one.
Okay, Counselor Allen.
One or two. Um, Josette, can you give an update on the play shed?
On the roof?
Yes.
Yeah, so I know that we got the three bids back, the one was within our budget, and I believe they said October.
I think it's this or next month.
October or November? Yeah, I thought they said October to Angie, but I'd have to check with Ange on, um, what their scheduling is for that. But I know Tim. But I know Tim, Tim power washed the floor, and we are going to be doing an acid treatment to the floor to give it a little bit, expose some of the aggregate so it will not be as slippery, um, so I know he did do that last week in preparation for that treatment so that we can get the kids not falling down when they're playing basketball.
Right, okay, thanks for that update, I thought you said it was potentially going to go in October.
Yeah, I thought, I'll have to check with Ange if there's been a pushback or something.
Yeah, I had another thought, I was wondering if Jeff can give updates for his department once in a while to council?
Um, sure. Maybe quarterly or something?
Yeah, I don't want to overburden them, but it seems like we're, we're not hearing from our City Waterworks, uh, head of the department.
Dale?
Yeah, did we receive our crack still, or?
Yeah.
Okay, so, Super Crew's got to kind of put a trailer together and, and get it kind of figured out.
Yeah, they have the trailer together, I think they were going to maybe, because he didn't want them starting on actual street, they were maybe going to take the rope material, weather permitting, as long as it was not raining, and maybe start on some of the practicing on the linear trail, filling it in with that rope stuff, heating it up, and then doing the, the pour.
Good. It'd be interesting to see how we do.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Josette.
Sure.
Any items from councilors? Counselor Wagner? Counselor Wagner, I, I think you're, there you go.
I know, I got to find the mouse, and then the arrow, and then the microphone. Um, first of all, Mr. McNair, can I get your, can you send me a Facebook message or whatever, if you want to say it out loud, I just wanted your phone number, because I know you've got a new phone number and I didn't get it in my phone.
Well, okay, you got a PIN?
I do, I've got to write it down.
503, 530, 0932.
All right, thank you, got it. Okay.
Actually, it's, actually, it's 555, 5555.
Okay, I'll dial that, see how that works.
Yeah, don't dial that second one, they'll get somebody in Holly.
That's all right. Um, so, I, nothing has been done incorrectly or wrong or against the rules, but one of the things we've talked about as a council is that when one of us has an opportunity to do something that, um, either is outside of just, quote-unquote, just being a city councillor, like when I was, um, appointed to the Economic Advisory Committee, or Lipsec, or when I got invited to the governor's mansion, you know, that kind of thing, we've always, um, talked about making sure that we let other, the, the council know as a whole what's going on, so that if some, first of all, if somebody asks a question, we can answer intelligently, um, but also if something appears like we are representing the city that we make it clear that we're representing ourselves, and again, nothing's been done incorrectly, but I was kind of surprised when the voters' pamphlet came out and there was an endorsement for, um, Margaret McGruder by Rick Hobart, Mayor of Vernonia, or Vernonia Mayor, however it was, um, written out. And again, I don't have a problem with it having been done, it's not against the rules, it's not in violation of anything, but it was a surprise to me because when I see something, um, with Susan Wagner, City Councillor, or, you know, Dale Webb, Councillor, Rick Hobart, Mayor, it has the impression of being, um, related to my role as a representative of the city. And again, I, you know, we've talked about it, we've agreed to the fact that if we're going to do something, or that we've been invited to do something that we're going to share with our fellow councilors, and I just would have appreciated knowing ahead of time that that was coming out, because I'm, you know, we are, I always say non-denominational, it's a non-partisan position, um, and, you know, we have the right to endorse, I guess, I didn't know that, but, um, I just, I, I would have appreciated a heads-up that, um, that had been done, and again, just a reminder, as a courtesy to our peers on council, that I would appreciate a heads-up if any one of us is acting or invited to something that, um, or taking a position on something that might potentially, um, be brought up by our constituents or neighbors, friends, I guess most of our neighbors and friends are constituents, but, um, that is what I wanted to bring up under items from councilors.
Well, thank you, Susan, I, I, I understand your concern, um, I, the next time somebody asks me to endorse them, I'll make sure that they just, uh, include, include my name as Rick Hobart, so.
I don't have a problem, and it's, there's nothing wrong with having done it, I just, if it's going, if they're, I just think as a courtesy, because we are public entity, public officials, we are, are persons who I, we have some sort of designation as public
Election official.
Officials, thank you, um, it just, it comes up, people, people pay attention, some people pay attention, some people don't, I guess I'm one of those that does, um, and again, I don't have a problem with it, I was just, I would have, I would have appreciated just it having been brought up prior to, or just an email, no, I guess you can't do an email to everybody, um, no, I guess it should maybe be brought up. And, and I'm not, like I said, I'm not concerned about it, I just, no surprises.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Any other, uh, councilor concerns? I have nothing as a mayor. If not, I guess we're ready for the action item summary.
Okay. So, um, I have the, staff is going to confirm that there was the removal of the 18-month deadline from the Intercultural Society's Lease and MOU, and send that confirmation to them. Um, staff's going to sign the waiver of remonstrance for the Shaw property, um, we're going to adopt the tract changes for Ordinance 925 and get information on the service and where it's coming from, and that it's not piggybacking on the current service coming into town through Zipley. We'll be bringing Ordinance 925 back to you guys on November 2nd. Um, staff will sign the Columbia County Agreement for the ballot box and request that the Public Works foreman, um, report an up, in an update form, um, quarterly. I thought of one more, and staff's going to get, um, estimated date for the play shed roof repair. Did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
Dale, what did I miss?
Well, you're just going to find out if we were starting that sewer project in there behind the millhouses.
Oh, I'm adding it. What's going on up Lakeview?
What's going on down there?
I know you don't want to try to drive your family car down through there.
No.
Right. We make it nice and flat and the kids will just do cookies in it.
Yeah. Okay, if there's no other, um, items, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:40 PM, meeting adjourned, goodnight all.
Night.